Hi and welcome everybody. I hope you can hear me, I'm a bit sick. I'll try to speak very clearly and loud. My first question is: who does not speak German in here? You do, you do. Ah, okay, a couple, that's okay. So, we will try this in English. So, welcome everybody to the special session Feminist Economics. This is a special session, so it should be a bit special and not so conservative or whatever. So we'll have quite a long time for discussion planned and yeah, we want you to interact. And this is recorded, so if you ask a question later on and you don't want to be recorded, just tell us and we'll press the stop button. My name is Ina Matt. I will chair the session today. I also studied economics at the University of Vienna and now I also study gender studies there. I'm also involved in some feminist projects among those. It's the Frau W L, I will say something about it later. The plan for the next 90 minutes, I will first briefly say something about this session and this conference and about Frau W L. And then I will introduce the two speakers of today and then afterwards they will have their presentations and then we will have an open discussion. So the presentations will only take about half of the time and then we have room for discussions as well. So, as you all know, in this organization of this conference, there were lots of people involved. Among those also Frau W L, which is Women Economics, Women Economist Group in Vienna. It was founded in 2004 and consists of students and graduates and also professionals. And we are meeting regularly every month. So in the last years, Frau W L has done many different things. Among those, we have organized some workshops for students, for female economics students and discussions about feminist economics. And we are also providing or trying to provide a safe space within the group to discuss our own research and other things. So that's like an open invitation to the women in here. If you want to join us, every first Tuesday of the month, we are meeting at Frauencafé at the Women's Café in Vienna. You can also join us on Facebook. Oh, come to the next meeting. In the beginning, at the call for papers for this conference, there wasn't, feminist economics wasn't named as one topic for itself at this conference. And that's very interesting, I guess. Because the organizers were discussing about it and we thought, or the organizers thought, that feminist view on economics should be part of a pluralistic approach. And the gender or intersectional perspective should be in pluralistic approaches, should be part of pluralistic approaches. So I guess the call for papers, or the papers that were sent in, showed that that wasn't the case. So that the feminist perspective was missing and that's why we're having this special session today. Alyssa later on will say something more about the relationship between pluralistic economics and feminist economics. Okay, enough about that. I will introduce the two speakers. First, this is Kete Knitler, on my right. She is a feminist economist and studied economics here at the VU. She has been politically active in quite a lot of different projects. Besides feminist project, she is also currently active at the Prekär Café, the Prekarity Café in Vienna. That's an initiative or group that has its roots in the Euro May Day activism. They are mainly concerned with the rising precarity of workers in the work, workers sphere. Of her and of us as well, yeah. We are all kind of precarious. And they are also focusing on illegal workers and migrants in the work. Kete has worked in different research projects and is also lecturer at the University of Vienna, not for feminist economics, because these courses are really hard to get and hard to be offered. I will say something later on about it as well. Together with Bettina Heidlinger, Kete published this great book, "The Introduction to Feminist Economics: Einführungen in die feministische Ökonomie" in German. It's the first of this kind in book in German. I guess, I don't know, I don't know any other book that's published. It was published in Mandelbaum Verlag and Kete also has some... If you want to buy them, so if you're interested or become interested in feminist economics, this is something you should really read. And the second speaker today is Alyssa Schneebau. She studied economics and gender studies at Wagner University and at the University of Massachusetts Amherst. That's always hard to pronounce, Massachusetts. But yeah, and she also PhD from economics from the University of Massachusetts Amherst. Alyssa is currently a Hertha-Fiernberg Postdoctoral Research Fellow at the Department of Economics here at the VU. She has published many articles in the fields of gender economics, also distribution of income and wealth, and also economic questions concerned with sexual orientation. So poverty among gays and lesbians, for example. In the last years, Alyssa has taught feminist economics here at the VU, which is really great and there are lots of, she told us that there are lots of interest, lots of interest from the student side. So one question would be: are there any former or students of Alyssa here in this room? Yeah, one, two, mm. Extra credits! And in her course, she also uses Kete's book. So you see, it all fits together. But yeah, so, okay. So I guess my hard part is over and I will now give Alyssa the word and you will start with your presentation.
It's so nice to see so many people here. I thought for sure with the weather and all, it wouldn't work, but it did, so great. Welcome. Yeah, so, as Ina told you, I'm going to talk about feminist economics. What is feminist economics? I think a lot of us have heard of something called feminist economics, but few of us can come up with a definition of what that might be and talk about its relationship to pluralist economics. So that's my goal for today. To look at the foundations of feminist economics. What is this whole thing about? To show also some kind of popular examples of what might be considered feminist economics in economic research and maybe activism today, to get a sense of how this whole thing works. And talk about the relationship with pluralist economics, which I think is not so straightforward or problem-free. But we'll get to that and it will be exciting. Okay. I also put in a slide here this week, a really foundational feminist economist, Barbara Bergman, who had been alive since 1927. She passed away this week and I thought I can't talk about feminist economics without mentioning her in this context. And I wanted to read two quotes of hers, which I think really say something about her and feminist economics and pluralist economics. So the first is: "True anecdotes, true stories, may well contain more valuable information about the state of things in the world than do economists' theories, which are by and large nothing but possibly untrue stories made up by economists sitting in their offices with no factual input whatever." So she really is critical of this idea that economists just kind of make up models and tell some stories without actually talking to people and finding out what real-life experiences are about. And that economics is very sort of separate from sociology, from anthropology. And she has been critical of this for decades. And this I find really interesting. Just a couple of weeks, 10 days before her birth, her death, she sent an email to the listserv, the International Association for Feminist Economics listserv, and she wrote this: "Unfortunately, quote, 'the profession' 'is not really interested in rescuing economics from being a minor branch of mathematics and converting it into something more resembling a science.'" One who was doing work in line with what is needed is Truman Dooley of Yale. When I asked him whether he was training students to do that kind of observational research, he said: "No, that would ruin their careers." So I wanted to bring that in and point it out as a feminist economist who I think is thinking and doing work very much in line with pluralist ideas, that economics is a science. It's been missing a lot of crucial parts of reality and that it's dangerous and precarious for economists to try to expand economics because it kind of makes it difficult to have a career. So I wanted to mention these things sort of in her honor. Okay, good. So I will get started then on my take of feminist economics. My first slide is titled "Not a Slide", called "What is Feminist Economics?" That would be kind of a logical start, but it's very difficult to answer the question: what is feminist economics? If you ask 10 feminist economists what they think feminist economics is, you will probably get 10 more or less different answers. So I thought, instead of just telling you what I think, I would go back in the literature and see what are the foundations of feminist economics? What is the core here? And then from that, we can build what is feminist economics today, right? What are the main issues in feminist economics? And I picked out two quotes to talk about the sort of two issues, the two core things that I think are important, the foundation of feminist economics, and I'll talk about each in detail. But here's a quote, a kind of preview. The first is: "Before the 1960s and the rise of the women's movement, women's experiences in households and labor markets had been completely ignored by mainstream economists." So that's the first issue. Women were not present in economics either as economists or as the thing that economists were studying. Okay, so that's the first problem. Women were not present, big problem. Second big problem: "We want to retain and improve economic analysis by ridding the discipline of biases created by the centrality of distinctly masculine concerns." And what I will explain is that feminist economics is critical of economics as a science because it is biased in very masculine ways. That economics is problematic in how it sort of does its work. And the feminist perspective on how the work is done is that it's distinctly masculine. We'll talk about that. So just a preview, those are the two issues. Okay, the first issue: that women's lives are ignored. And my two students have seen this slide and so... But, sorry. But I like to play on the word ignorance because it has ignore. Economics is ignoring women. But it's also ignorance, it's really dumb to do that. The name is English speaker. How does it go to that language? Okay, good. Yeah, so I'm just gonna run through this. The main, a main interesting point here is that economists always thought of women and women's work as primarily in the household. That's what sort of women did. They took care of the house, they took care of the kids. For a very long time, that was the idea. But what's really interesting to note is that even when economists did that, they constructed ideas of how household work was done and what it meant for women's economic lives, which were completely strange and unrealistic. For example, new home economics, that's this thing that came really from Gary Becker and the University of Chicago. There we have a theory where we say, "Okay, how do people make decisions about which work they want to do?" And it's like this: even if men and women are completely equal in their ability to do paid work, for example, or do household work, they have, there's no comparative advantage, they're both equally good. Well, at some point, the woman's gonna get pregnant. So even if it's just a few days, or a few weeks, or a few months, or a few years, she is, because of this biological fact, she's going to get better in housework and care work. And the man is going to develop a comparative advantage in paid work. And thus, it's very rational to understand that that's going to happen and to just invest in the field where you're going to have the comparative advantage. Period. This is the theory of new home economics and it's rational and it sounds a lot like economics, but it certainly ignores a lot of the circumstances of that. Well, maybe the man doesn't want to invest in being the main breadwinner or maybe the woman doesn't want to be the main home caretaker. And just saying that it's efficient and that's what they should do really ignores sort of social constraints and institutions that make people don't want to do that. Okay, there are other things. Bargaining models in economics, maybe you guys have seen this in your studies. Bargaining models started in very interesting ways where we wanted to know how does a couple make decisions? And the very first models, and still many in the literature, papers that are being published today, still use models where the authors assume what's called a unitary utility function, where the household has one utility function. That means every person in the household has the same preferences and the same way that they need to maximize their utility. Which is a really strange idea because you all live in households or you have at some point, or you will at some point, and not everybody has the same preferences. And so ignoring that fact really ignores some gender issues. So, okay, these are just examples of that even though economics said, hey, yeah, women are in a household, they totally had strange ideas about how households work. Yeah, good. When we think about the history, the his story, of economic thought... If you think about the history of economic thought, there's some really interesting research in feminist economics about this and we see that there are few assumptions that really come out of classical economics, classical political economy about women and how they are in the economy. Namely, first, all women are or will be married. All women have children. That is a standard assumption in classical political economy. Two, all women are and ought to be economically dependent on men. Three, women are and ought to be housewives. They have the biological comparative advantage. Four, women are unproductive in the industrial workforce. And five, women are irrational and unfit as economic agents. These are standard assumptions that come up in classical economics. So I'm talking about the first books, you know, Marshall, Edgeworth. That's what we hear about women. Okay, so from the emergence of economics as the science that we know today, or at least the foundations of the science that we know today, this is how women were understood, which is strange. So that is all to say that women's lives are largely ignored by economists, even today. Even today, there are a lot of papers, for example, on gender gaps in income or time spent working or whatever. And very often in economics, what I see when I read these papers is that gender is considered something that's a dummy variable. Let's put in a dummy variable, a mix and call it, "So awesome, we're talking about gender, great, how progressive." But we have to understand women's economics lives as more as a dummy variable and understand a lot of the institutions that put men and women in the economic positions that they're in today. So a lot of the work today that's being done on so-called gender economics, I would say is not feminist economics because it doesn't study power relationships and history and sociology and psychology and all of the things that determine what makes women and men's lives the way that they are in the economy. That was issue one, that women's economic lives have been kind of ignored in economics. Good. Here comes point number two, and this is a little bit trickier. So I will try to explain it well. Point number two is that economics as a science, and this has nothing to do with the economy as the thing we go out and spend money and whatever. Economics as a science is biased in masculine ways, ways that we can consider from a social perspective masculine. How can we think about this? Well, let's think about what's in the core of economics, so what's the stuff that gets published in AER, in QJE, in things that are considered good economics. In the core of economics, what we see are studies of the public, public issues, markets and government. We see individual agents and we see efficiency as an important goal. The methods that we use, mostly analytical models or econ metrics, one could describe them as rigorous, precise, objective, scientific, detached, mathematical, formal, general. These are characteristics from a sociological and linguistic point of view, which are typically ascribed to masculinity. If you think about what is masculinity and what is femininity, femininity has nothing to do with rigor or objectivity or scientific. Femininity is more so related and emotional and concerned and malleable and flexible. These are particularly masculine things. In the periphery of economics, stuff that often isn't even considered economics, but instead considered sociology, very often, we see studies of the privates, of the family, for example, studying society and institutions or equity as a main concern, a main outcome. That's interesting. Methods that are intuitive or vague or subjective. And so here, I'm thinking of things like interviews or observational studies. This is not considered mainstream economics and these things are socially, linguistically considered feminine. So these things about economics, that economics only wants to see this kind of work and is ignoring or not giving much credit to this kind of work, has a gender component in that this stuff is distinctly masculine socially. And this stuff is distinctly feminine. So economics as a science gives credit to the masculine stuff, the hard stuff, the tough stuff, the objective stuff, and sees this kind of relational, talking, emotional, whatever stuff that matters. If we want to understand the economy, it's feminine in the sense of how we understand socially masculinity and femininity and that's the stuff that economics is not. We don't want that, yeah? Okay, good. Yeah, and that's also assumptions, it's the same point. So here's the interesting thing, right? Feminist economics are critical of the narrowness of what economics as a discipline thinks is good work. That's clear, right? So, hey, it's not okay that you only want econ metrics or you only want analytical models. But the thing is, those critiques are pretty parallel to the pluralist understanding of economics, as far as I can tell, right? That this thing, that economics is only interested in metrics and only interested in certain types of analysis and fields of analysis, that's very parallel to the pluralist critique. And what's unique to feminist economics in that regard is that feminist economics says, "Yeah, that's all really bad. Not only is it bad, but it's also definitively ranking masculine characteristics over feminine characteristics." So they give a sort of gender lens to the same critiques that we already had in pluralism. So gender-specific critique. Good. What, where does this problem come from? Why is economics so bad in some ways? And one really obvious and important explanation is that economists as a group are pretty homogeneous. Yeah, these are middle-aged white guys, upper class, right? And if you have such an homogeneous group, you only get certain perspectives because very often people from one group have similar perspectives and experiences. And so by sort of excluding other perspectives, other experiences, you're missing out on a lot of information about the world. If economics really wants to study how the economy works and that's for everybody, then it needs to not just hear the perspective of this group of people and the understanding of this group of people. So it's really interesting because economics is all like, yeah, we're a super-objective science. We're really hardcore about that. We don't get involved in emotions or in many... We're really objective. But it's a false objectivity and it's only a very soft objectivity because it's only one group of people, a very restricted group of people, who's doing this analysis. So a harder objectivity, a more thorough objectivity would involve opening the group of analysts, getting more perspectives. That would make economics more objective, not less. All right, here are more ideas about how the economy is. Okay, good. I will run through in like two minutes, I promise, Chair.
Don't, don't hurry.
A couple of examples of current feminist economic issues. The care economy is a huge topic in feminist economics. The idea there is care work, work of taking care of other people, is really, really important. Nobody would be alive if nobody cared for them, right? From day one, from nine months before day one. Or 10 months, I don't know how that works. And that work, that caring work, is disproportionately done by women. So, okay, no wonder that it was feminist economists who wondered if, hey, this is a lot of what women are doing, we need to understand this as an economic category. Interestingly, this has also a lot of pluralist sort of interest in it. If we think about how do we assign a value to care work? That, I think, is a pluralist issue, right? Because we need to understand how different work, first, what activities are work and good for the economy and how do we value them, right? We shouldn't just take prices from the market as our way of understanding what something is worth. And hopefully, you guys are all on this pluralist economics train and you all see that also, okay? And care work is a really great example of when and why we shouldn't just take market prices as a valuation of an activity. Yeah, also, should care be a good that's allocated by the market only? I think pluralist economics and feminist economics were critical of the market as the main allocational mechanism. Care work, should it all, should you only get to care for a child or an elderly person or whoever, if you could pay for it? So feminist economics and pluralist economics, I think, are critical of the market being the only mechanism to allocate goods and services. Okay, good. That was example one. Example two, gender development, so macroeconomic development. Something, I really, I'm not a macroeconomist. Just so that's clear, so I won't pretend to be an expert here. But one of the best books I ever read in economics was a book by Nyla Kabir and she wrote a book about economic decisions of women who came from Bangladesh and lived in London. And she talked really clearly and... Yeah, clearly, and told a really great story about how much these women's backgrounds, their social backgrounds, their cultural backgrounds, their religious backgrounds, influenced their labor market decisions and what that meant for the economy of London. And I thought, of course, right? Of course, our economic decisions are influenced by our cultural upbringing and our social upbringing. But folks like that made that really, really clear in really nice ways. And I think it's a great example of feminist economics and pluralist economics looking at a lot of things matter in the economy and in our economic decisions. Okay, that was a quick example. Last example, the labor market. And it's really hard for me to keep short because I'm a labor economist. But basically... That's really hard for me to keep short, because I'm a labor economist, but basically, feminist economics and I think also pluralist economics wants to see labor market decisions are not just kind of an abstract, objective market allocating who works and for how much, but that there are a lot of decisions that go into who does what kinds of work, right? There's sociology that says, yeah, women should only be good at this, men should only be good at this, if you want to be an engineer, you're probably a guy, because that's how guys are socialized and how girls are socialized. So sociology matters a lot here, psychology matters a lot here in our labor market decisions, biology, some would say matters a lot in our labor market decisions. Okay, so we got to pull information from lots of different fields to understand labor economics. Okay, good. We could talk about a lot of stuff, but we won't. But we can later. Good. Here's my last slide, namely a specific or articulated discussion about the relationship between feminist and pluralist economics. And here's how I see it. Like I said, I think that there are a lot of similarities of the core arguments or complaints about mainstream economics from both sides, that economics totally ignores a lot of important parts of reality. One of the major differences is that feminist economics does that explicitly from a feminist perspective and sees the whole thing from a gender issue. So economics is really interested in sort of masculine stuff and ignores feminine stuff. So we could talk about is that good or bad, right? Because we already have this critique from pluralism, this critique that economics is ignoring a lot. So maybe it's just polarizing to talk about things from a gender perspective. Maybe we don't need that anymore. Okay, could be, we'll talk about it. But remember the first issue, the first of the two core issues of feminist economics, namely that economics ignores or is very, very bad at understanding women's economic lives. That's still the case, and I fear, and from what I know and what I've read from the pluralist movements, my impression is, and I'm open to you guys convincing me of something else, but also the program of this conference, as Nina told us, suggests that it's a case that even pluralist economics is ignoring women's economic lives and gender-specific issues. It's still an issue, guys. Women still earn less than men, men and women still do different kinds of work. You know, we're not post-feminism, we're not post-sexism, not yet. I hope one day we will be, and I don't need a job anymore because it won't matter, but it still matters. So we shouldn't ignore what's missing in economics in our analysis and understanding of gender. Okay? So that's a kind of critique of pluralist economics from what I see so far. There's still time to change, so if you guys are working on pluralist economics, there's still time to include gender in a meaningful way, and I hope that we will do that. Great. Okay.
There were so many issues raised already in this first input. Please hold back your questions, because the second input we follow, which is, which also will be very interesting, yeah, write them down that you don't forget them, we will have time to discuss. I hope all questions. Hit it off?
Wie mach ich das gut?
Um, wie?
Ja, musst du das so?
Vor der Präparation für die Tagesordnung gab es einige Fragen, die die Frau Wähl verwehrt. Zusammen mit dem, wir sind nun bei Alyssa, und alle anderen. Aber das sollte die Leute gut interessieren, um eine Frage zu beantworten. Oder eine Frage ist, ob es eine Antwort gibt. Also ich will kurz. Und das ist die Frage, was ist feministikonomisch? So kann es charakterisieren? Und für mich, basically, drei verschiedene Leveln, die fast alle feministikonomischen Leveln covert. Also das ist erst von zwei verschiedenen Leveln, Analyse, Analyse und Kritik. Es ist in German, aber die Wörter im Englisch sind sehr ähnlich. Und der erste Level von Analyse und Kritik ist, zu kritisieren oder theories, die existieren. Fast alle verschiedenen Ökonomische Theorien, die von Marx bis zur Neoklassik über Keynes und wahrscheinlich viele Dinge, die jetzt behandelt werden, die Pluralistikonomie genannt wird. Und was kritisiert Alyssa, heißt Menschen, der Laut auf der Parteien, die zusammenreisen, um zu zeigen, welche Blindspiele von alten Theorien sind. Eines der größten Spiele ist das unbezahlte Arbeitslosigkeit. Beispiel in Österreich, der unbezahlte Arbeitslosigkeit beträgt eine halbe Hälfte der Arbeitszeit, die man jedes Jahr macht. Und in anderen Ländern, die weniger industriell leisten, leisten sie sogar mehr. Und während die Preis ist, der Angestrebte bekommt es mehr. So liefert der unbezahlte Arbeitslosigkeit hier ohne Suche eine halbe Hälfte des Landes. So müsste man natürlich, du bist nie passiert, du hast die Fehlern zu halfen, die Fragen. Und das ist, wie die Ökonomische Status steht. Ja, so ist. Ja, es ist nicht ein Teil des Weltalls. Und der andere, singt der Strategische Silence, was bedeutet, dass alle, meine, die von Kainz oft, Bau relations are not part of the economics. Und Bau relations, die helfen, um den Prozess von Gender influence, Exploitation. So feministikonomisch sehen wir, wie hast du sehen, was, wer ist, Theorie ist blind, was ist aus? So das ist der eine Level von Analyse und Kritik, und der andere Level ist, zu sehen, was ist going on in der Wirtschaft. Ja, aber, 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 die Situation ist aufleben, aber meine, die Männer, die Frauen, place der, dies kann dann ohne Mikro, also in einer macroökonomischen Level, usually much easier to do in a macroökonomische Level, because then you have, ist, dann ist von meiner, von women, ich würde auch wollen, zu der macroökonomische, gibt es, manchmal komplett, ich habe auch kein Wort gebaut, ein Gender Money, ein Gender International Trade. So you have to, sind much more in broader categories, and also heißt, jetzt more difficult, but it's the advanced, it's not so easy, so you have to, you have to have more elaborate concept, about how to think about feminist economics, because it's not done to say, this is the man, this is the woman, and that's the difference between them. So that's, war ein kleiner Fan of it. Ja, and another level would be to look at the topic, how's economic policy influencing our life? To see there is no such thing like gender neutral taxes, or no such thing like gender neutral monetary policy. Denn das ist also, also Level, which, obwohl es heißt, part of feminist economics, and which is maybe somehow out of fashion at universities, and that's the third level, about you to be some alternative, because it's always, always heißt, was ist die Liste Gold, du sind gebaut, alternative, sind gebaut, the prosperity society, or even about the prosperity society. Ja, das ist somehow a framework, and we find this framework, you can find a lot of different kinds of feminists, zusammen, aber, interessiert in dieser, that's different kinds of level, oder, not interested in this kind of level at all. Und jetzt zusammen, zusammen, mit Schritt, more interesting to have more open discussions with feminist economics, to see what the differences are, what, what is our motivation to do, or this work, because it's for sure, it's not the profit maximizing. Ja, ich würde sagen, der Ort ist, ist noch geschützte, geschützte Marke.
Trade mark.
Ja, feministikonomisch ist noch der Trade Mark, oder eine Partie, ist, dieses feministikonomische, das ist, but, er tut, fand, diskutiert, more, and also, du diskutierst, about the word feminist, what do we mean, what kind of feminist, aber, kommt, was, about, ich finde, feminist economics. Und ich würde sagen, maybe it could be, the minimum level of accordance, to say, it's not enough to count, and women, and to say, that's, that's it, because doing this just means not to be as stupid as, also, anybody else. Which is also good, but maybe not to the next feminist economics. Ja, hier, wir haben, der 19th Century, hier vor die Frauen, die können sehen, hat der erste Sam-Pioneers of feminist economics, because we do have a history of feminist economics, and can be traced back to the 19th Century and even further. Der Problem ist, wie schon, gebaut, der, baut, der, baut, der, baut, der, economic textbook, not in those about, history of economics, or history of economics, also, ich liest, was, left, and one I studied. Also, ich bin, was, ist, der, hätten some changes in the main textbooks, or not. Ja. The woman, who is the most famous one, and this picture is, is her, she is, Harriet Taylor Mill, that's the one, maybe you have heard about, already, and, ja, it's, it's really astonishing, that, not even she is mentioned, any word, because, oh, she is the Galions Figur, oder, famous one. But here, the screen, the, was the co-author, and it's not, any kind of book, is, one of the most famous books, which has been written in economics in the 19th Century, the principle of political economy. Hier, der, 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 hier on the left side, you see, the book she wrote, it's a modern copy, the real old books, at the end, because you couldn't read the date, but the, made out of leather, and in gold and in red, and it looked very valuable. She had big problems at the beginning to find the publishing house, but when she managed to, but she got more than five or six editions of her books.
Where is she from?
From both, from Great Britain. Eine of the first, all feminist economics, also, in Great Britain, where. So you have this conversations on political economy, but James, and then, very similar story of another woman, from Harriet Mathiello, the illustrations of political economy, which was very successful, and both of them, Charlotte, Lotta, Breaker, Flish, and all the prominent, economics thinkers of that time, also, from Ricardo, C, the old, acknowledged the work, the, and of course, also, Gott, the loss of music, was, and, to, for women to be, intellectual, active, and to publish things. And here we have another type of woman, it's, it's, Charlotte Bergis Gilman, she lived in the United States, and she was one of the most well-known and exposed feminists of the first women movement. She wrote, one book is Women and Economics, about the economic relation of women and men, and it's really funny to read it, you can find it online. Yeah, you also have to get used to it, but when you're used to it, you can have a lot of fun with it. And she talks a lot about, unwatched waiver of women in the households, how women forced to make all this work, or to provide this work, unpaid, how the law system is forcing women to do this system. And, ja, and on the other hand, on the top, the forerunner, it's a literature magazine which she published, and in science, this, story about the women who left her home, and then she had a big discussion, however, it's also possible to read it, and to find it in the internet, just put it there, because if you want to write a story about feminist economics, where do you find the first economics, because at the beginning, you don't find the university, because it wasn't there, and discipline, and then women had, were allowed to study, much later than the men. So you also have to look at other, you can find feminist economics, had the intersection of economics and literature. Then, there is, here it's, 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 it's , the first feminist economics, economics of Austria, who also studied economics, who is not from Austria. Maybe you can tell us later, who is the first feminist economist in York? Of course, it's not only, the, 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 definitely was one of them.
There is also a prize named in the, in the, in the professor, professorship, named of the Kita Leiste, for women, to support women.
She is at least one of the women who is not completely forgotten, she's in Austria. Here, we also, we entered the face, where Neo-Classic started, that's Mary Bailey Marshall, the woman of Alfred Marshall, and she also sought at university, and she was one of the first women in England, who started, finished, that is quite successfully. Yeah. And, for sure, she was much more conservative, like, Harriet Taylor Mill, or others. But she did, right? Gut, and the interesting stuff. Yeah, and then, here, here in the middle, we have somehow a break, it's... It's, oh, when we see our, our discipline started. Yeah. When one point you can say it's one starting point, it's feminist economics, which came out in nineteen ninety four. And that's one kind of economics, which is really, really placed at universities. And all the topics, all topics which feminist economics deal with, they don't, they are not born at universities. They come, they come out of the street or out of the second film movement. Yeah, the or the interest in am bait labor, what does am bait labor mean for capitalism? How is it used in capitalism? Why do we have something like am bait labor? How did this develop over the centuries within capitalism? Why is it also a new form of kind of labor, like wage labor is something new compared to other centuries? And so we, we all love to do that, to the second women's movement. And there are also these two, maybe you can see it, the two arrows in both directions, one going back because it was the second movement who started to reveal our history and to rediscover it. And then there came a lot of inputs to which some one ended at the university. And the, the source of knowledge production out of universities. Maybe then here we come to this kind, or this part of what feminist economics is and could be, it's all the networks, informal networks, more institutional networks of women and men who are concerned with this topic and still fighting for improvement, not only about the scientific improvement, but also about what is our life? And how do we want to be our life? And how can we influence it? That's what we have learned as economics, economics. Yeah. That's all.
Thank you, Kita. So as you see, there are two very interesting, but two very different presentations. So I think even these presentations show the very pluralism in, you know, in feminist economics. So with the more historical and political perspective that Kita showed us. Now we are open for discussion. Yes. Yeah, I will, sorry, I will just, I will just collect some and then, yeah.
Okay, firstly, you asked how is this building university? I'm coming to France and women are basically completely ignored. You're from where? From the university of France. Okay. Roman is, we never heard of Elinor Ostrom. We've never heard of Harry and Jane Mill. Even John Stuart Mill is covered in a really increasingly generous and non-issue. We have a female professor who does quite intense work on economics, gender or gender pay gap. But there is no single course where she can anything about it. Because it's not in curriculum.
There would be, there would be, also, we talked about this before we had the, before we had the session, in, at what, like, at your universities and on, at which university? Is there a feminist economic course at your university? That's the better question. Okay, raise your hand if there is one. Yeah, except WU.
Well, compulsory or?
Also elective, I guess. Elective is okay. Yeah, so that's the University of Vienna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, but that's, it's very, it's very interesting. I had a question. What sentence you mentioned, feminism is as its own discipline. So you see a feminist economics, you see it as an own discipline or as a subfield in economics or as a subfield in some other discipline? What was your understanding and the way to organize our knowledge and those?
Thank you.
I have a final question. I think, listen, you started, you were kind of describing these feminine and masculine attributes, also in economics and other types, areas of knowledge. And you kind of showed that you have objectivism, specific statements on one side, subjective and relational on the other. My question is, do you really think that this, that it's a realistic and attainable goal to demand that we make something that will price so high as a discipline and be objective and true finding that we do things like vagueness on the same level? Do you really think that's realistic? A, B, you think it's useful? B. Then, my specific question, when you talk about care work versus work, that's just like one example for a time work, I guess, that isn't captured in the mainstream approach. But what is, what then is your definition for work? Because in that sense, I could basically claim everything I do every work. So maybe you would specify in that. And I'll stick to those two questions and maybe.
There was one, I will get one more and then, and then we will start the first answering. Yeah, no, 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 no.
Okay. Okay. Because, yeah. I, yesterday, I came from Paris. I was at the Eynat Conference, the conference of the. There was a session with Julie Neves, who was speaking. It's a chief professor at humans. That's what Wikipedia said, amateur.
Yeah, you must post them.
Yeah, you must post. Okay. And she emphasized that, you know, it's important to, to say that women and men are not as different as it is often, I don't know, put in, 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 in science. She compared more difference between men and women, such as that they're like from North Dakota and South Dakota. Like, there are some differences, but like, they're not as large as they are often put, like, also in the day, I don't, whatever. And then I asked her a question, would she, I know, she, she did, would she, so, because I, I think, yes, one, one way of maybe reducing or of reaching a more equal society is to actually say, okay, like, that's too much labeling of women, that they are too different, can, 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 can be important. But, like, I also think that sometimes a labeling in that the fact that women might have different needs in the society can also be a source of, of, like, an argument for change. So my question would be, what are chances and pitfalls in labeling women as different than men?
So there was this question about how to put feminist economics, like, the discipline wise, where would we put feminist economics? Then there was the question of resolving the dichotomy in science. As such, I would like to add, that's not just economics. I mean, science, if you talk about science, there is always, you know, the objective and the subjective, the one and the other. So that's, that's a really critique on science, I guess. Actually, and then there was the other question from Riziu, what is work? And this last one, the Katis, asked, you know, pitfalls of?
Chances and.
Chances and pitfalls of essentializing gender or naming gender. I don't know what, who wants to start with this, maybe this question, but there would be both, for both, I guess.
Okay. Poo, good question. Where does feminist economics fit? I personally see it as part of economics, particularly because it's explicitly reflective of and on economics as a discipline. I don't see it as its kind of own thing, just like we don't think of macroeconomics as its own thing and microeconomics as its own thing. It's, I think, a part of the whole that ought to be understood if we want to understand the economy. So from a discipline point of view, I see it like that. Which, by the way, speaks to what I wanted to say to Riziu, who asked, is it reasonable or even do we even want something where we start thinking about vagueness or subjectivity to be part of economics? And I think to answer that question, we have to go back and ask a different question, namely, what do we want from economics? What is the point of economics as a discipline? And me, I would say it is to understand the workings of the economy. Who has money, who doesn't? Who does what work? For how, how many hours or minutes a day do people spend and what kinds of, how do we organize our economic lives? That's the point of economics for me. And in that sense, yes, I think we need this so-called vagueness or subjectivity. I mean, I can remember when I was eighteen years old and my grandmother, who was an immigrant to New York, and she paid some, her taxes her whole life, and she was ninety years old and she couldn't afford to buy cookies because they took away her, whatever, thing from the state. And for me, that was like such an issue of economics. How do we organize our society that a ninety-year-old woman can't buy the cookies that she wants to buy? Right? So, yeah, that's vague. I can't write about that in a paper. I can't do a kind of metrics about that, right? Of course, I could do an analysis and have a dummy variable for women over ninety. But is that really the story of how the economy works? And, and I like that story. Not that I like that my grandma couldn't get the cookies. But I like the story because it brings us back to why are we doing this? Because we want to, there are reasons. There are systematic reasons why things like that happen. And for me, economics is about, is about understanding those reasons. And so, yeah, vagueness, I'm all for it if we really understand more. Because, guess what? Maybe like point five percent of people in the world can read a standard, non-vague economics paper and get something out of it. So tell me what vague is. Because I think it's just as vague to produce something that people can't understand.
Oh, what you, what you also mentioned in the, on your first slide, the tat from, from the one economist who just died?
Yeah, Barbara Bergman.
Barbara Bergman with the anecdote, no? I mean, an anecdote can be so much more than a model or so.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Right? So I'm all about vagueness in that sense. Do I think it's possible in economics? I hope so. I hope that at some point, we're going to realize, oh, economics, we're not doing very good job at understanding the economy. We got to change something. Maybe in twenty or thirty years, we'll get there. As long as, you know, people like us in this room keep making it clear that we need it. Okay. I'll just finish and go through the list and then to Kita. Labeling women as different or what was your expression, essentializing gender? That's a really, really great question. And I think for, as long as there are differences, it does make sense to do it. Because there are, not that I think that there's some biologically determined thing that make women one way and men one way. Even if we abstract from that, to whatever extent it exists, there are social things that say men are something and women are something else. And that, those prescriptions of what men and women are have consequences for our economic lives. So yes, I think it makes sense to talk about men and women. Men and women, that's A, nor, it's simply what we make it. There's no such thing as man or woman. That's all what we say it is. Right? So, yeah, it's important to understand what we understand from men and women because that's all tied into how we experience the economy. So, yeah, if, yeah, if that's the idea of essentializing gender, yeah, I still think it's important because it still matters. Right? How to define work? Last question. I think, I, I guess, I thought about it for about ten seconds. I guess work, I would define it as anything that's productive for the economy. So I don't think, I was going to say, I don't think drinking beer with your friends is productive, but maybe it is because you have to buy the beer. I don't know. Maybe my, like, going for a run in the park isn't productive for the economy. That might not be work.
Because you are a part of the economy and you're a man of shame.
Yeah, you're trimming your body, huh?
So are we. So I think this book, I was misinterpreting or interpreting different views of vague as a word that associate with femininity. That is undescriptive. Everyone has a different interpretation for that. And so I feel like it's hard to, like, sit in a room even here, I think we'd all have a different definition for work. So how do we come, how can we create a theory that is strong enough to, to, you know, grow against major theories? If we can, you can come to a conference in this room.
Maybe by being specific about which type of work we're talking about. We don't have to talk about all work ever. We can talk about care work in the home of little kids. Being specific and not vague. Maybe. Okay.
I think all the, the question, what, what this work was, maybe it was one of the most revolutionary and most important questions within the second movement movement and also within economics, just to say, am bait labor is work. It's not because it's done of love, because of love. And it's not spare time and it's not our hobby and not our leisure, it's work. And then the lot of discussions started, yeah? Do we want to get this work paid on a political level and payment for am bait labor is still a campaign dating back to the eighties? And it has a wide range of who is claiming it and with what goals. The conservative ones who just want to stay at home and raise the children while helping a well-paid man. That's the conservative side and then the other far left-wing side, you had women who demanded money for am bait labor in always on a high and high levels or that it is clear it's not possible to finance it and to make capitalism crash. But that, you have a wide range. And then what work means always has been changing over the centuries and also within capitalism. And also the question, why is it an important question or related to what is it important? To what, what we see or want to have to be analyzed, that what is exploitation and how do different kinds of work, how are they interlinked? How do the work for capitalism? Can capitalism exist without am bait labor? No, definitely not. But why not? And how is capitalism including this am bait labor? And it's also, then, then, you have a lot of parallels between am bait domestic labor and knowledge work. A lot of knowledge work is am bait out of, oh, you don't have this fixed distinction between working place and place where you live and working time and spare time. Where do you, do your ideas come from? Probably in the morning when you wake up or during your dreams. Is dreaming part of your work? Somehow, yes, yeah. So, yeah. Which is, yeah, a starting point for going deeper to this, this discussion. And yeah, to the, I think, one of the most important things to do for economics is to work more about wissenschafts, theory. Yeah. Yeah. Philosophers of science and of our science and to get more, to discuss more about what does objectivity mean or can mean. Because somehow it's also a label. And it's true that economics is an objective discipline. It just stated, and they say we are close to natural sciences, but you have to make so many abstractions, so many assumptions, that what, what is objective and that, that's quite vague. What you leave out and what you put inside, you can argue it, but you, you have to argue it and then you have so-called sample or decision-making insight, which is not the given, God's given objectivity. And, yeah, and, and the, the head, the head, in a lot of discussion about this formation of, of sciences, also feminist critique on it, in the form Sandra Harding, perfect or it is, which would be very fruitful for everyone, not just for feminist economics, but to get a bigger distance to its own discipline. And what was the other questions? The naming, naming, specifically naming women, labeling, labeling women. And the last one was the.
Men and women are equal or are different?
When at birth, at the age of ten.
No, but I have used this concept.
Yeah. At the moment, we still can't avoid it. Because there are so many people who say feminism, forget it, men and women are equal, so we need this fucking numbers just to say, no, it's not. We still have this old disadvantages and inequalities and they do exist and then we can put them in statistics or more elaborated economic models and all of them will tell us there are still differences. So we need it. And at the same time, it's also enforcing all stereotypes. If we always say it's like this, and it's like this on an empirical level and also on how to deal with theories. So if you say, the objectivity is male, it's not really male, it's just labeled, has been designed to be the male stuff. I wouldn't say that, yeah. So it's, it's... I think you somehow gave the answer for questions, that there are a lot of pitfalls, but we can't avoid them. And the discipline, I think feminist economics has to be part of every discipline, but it's really hard to reach it, to put it into practice. Because there's something like finance sciences without some kind of gender budgeting and understanding of the underlying structures. And therefore, it's also good to have this special discipline with feminist economics, which would deal with all these different levels of economics, economics, also to create experts on it. Which doesn't mean that we need it everywhere, because it's not only the little expert.
Do we have more questions? I take the woman first.
And I was like, because you mentioned like alternatives and utopia, according to feminist economics. Maybe you can just mention a few sentences on that. Because from my perspective, I sometimes have a feeling that, which is why I very much like the way you were describing it from different topics, or it's just like that feminist, sometimes feminist economics is very much related to the critique of mainstream and what is missing. But, and, yeah, and I'm very interested in like alternative perspectives.
I have a question on the relation between feminist economics and pluralism. And I think, especially, I think the work of De Viti showed that gender was too really specific developed in the time of capitalism, this paid and unpaid labor. And I think, then, I think it's the question if feminist economics is necessary that they are also always a critique of capitalism in it? And then it's linked to the question also, then pluralism should be also always critical of capitalism, I think, which is definitely not now. But I think if it's really gone through, then the question is necessary, or if there are some really big contradictions between pluralism and feminist economics because they are totally different ideas on that.
There is no doubt.
Two quick questions. The first one would be, what would be your feminist analysis on, about the austerity politics in Europe?
Oh. No problem. Just a short question.
Is, do we really need a feminist economics that doesn't take into account other accesses of discrimination, like race or class?
No. Do you want to?
I skip it. Four minutes.
No. Next, come on, ask.
I was curious about the interrelation to demography and population economics. The field is growing more and more and is basically co-opted by neoclassical peers. And it would need, it would definitely be great to have a feminist invasion. This would be the first. And the second one would relate it to you. You have mentioned the concept of meso, meso-economics. I've worked on meso-economics a little bit. It's not very popular. And I would wonder what is your theoretical or practical body of meso-economics, mesosphere?
The last one, there was another, another question.
Yes. If you look at the problems of gender from a sociological perspective, you see that it's very different, very weak, like power, socialization, culture, segregation on the labor market, etc. And I wonder, are all those things basically ignored in economics because the main methodology of economics is simply not fit to really capture those things? Because, well, let's face it, I reject the idea that you can put something like segregation of culture in your bloody formula.
Okay, I mean, we are, we are, the time is running out. We will probably take longer. So, yeah. But if you're still interested, stay. But I guess because we're short on time, we will just like one person answers the question each. So start with utopias and alternatives?
There much more than I can tell now, but for example, Henrik Zeller-Milch, she was in favor for something quite similar, which would be called a unconditional basic link. She also started more conservative, but then because of the revolution in Europe in eighteen eighty-four, she became more radicalized and took up ideas from the utopian socialist and thought about workers' cooperatives, but workers' cooperative not only in the real production of some products, but also workers' cooperative common housing and making older housework together. And also here, there's a lot of fixed frame, big continuities till today. All concerning housing of alternative ways of how to organize, now we've said care or social productive work. Charlotte Birkenstein, she also wrote some fictional utopian novels, which are also one, another kind of reference. Then you always find the big discussions between reforms within capitalism or do we need to go beyond it? And the utopias are the second ones.
And that's, I think, I think the, no, capital, capitalism, the next, you know, key word. So the relationship feminist economics and pluralism and a critique on capitalism. Feminist economics always critical towards capitalism and should pluralist economics also be that or...
Yeah. Concerning all those people who call themselves feminist economics, not all of them criticize capitalism. But it also depends what you understand on feminism and what, for example, in Sweden, feminism has less negative connotation than in Austria. So there much more persons who call themselves feminist economists because it's not the stigma to call oneself feminist.
That's also feminist parties in Sweden.
There's a feminist party in Sweden, so you find a few of them feminist neoclassic economics, which probably you would not in Austria or depending. For me, it's definitely part of it because why else should we make all this work? But that's, that's my opinion, enough?
Really quickly, my answer to these first two questions is very much related. So first, utopias. I haven't thought about it so much, but something that comes up immediately for me is that I think that there's a huge amount of imposition of gender and gender roles and gender ideology put upon people and that really restricts our personal freedom of who we can be in society. And I think a utopia would get rid of this really strict gender roles and mechanisms. And then that's related to me, to capitalism. For me, again, not every piece of work in feminist economics is critical of capitalism. I think that all good economists, no matter what sort of umbrella they put themselves under, should be critical of capitalism, not in the sense that they should dislike capitalism, but that they should be critical of the structure of the world that we live in, the choices that we made of how we organize our economy. These are choices. Capitalism is a choice, right? And we should be critical of our choices from different perspectives. And in that sense, I think that good feminist economics and good pluralist economics should be critical of capitalism. And the relation to the utopian capitalism, I very much think that's part of this very strict gender binary existence comes in many ways because capitalism needs that. So, yeah, there's the relationship.
And maybe just to this more practical question, how do we deal with topics which don't fit into formulas? Because it's definitely true, you can't put everything which you want to answer in a formula. But why do we stick to formulas? We have a wide, wide range of instruments, how to analyze them. And that's also our instrument, instruments as economics, economists. And the other thing is also, it's also how you interpret your formulas. You get something out and then you build all this, you build up a story around it. And the story can much bigger than only the question of this formula. That's something which we can do. Maybe putting things gender secretly in a formula doesn't mean that we have a useful outcome or that so many stupid things done, which are declared to be gender and to be, and to be, no, fuck it.
Maybe you could just, Elisa, maybe you could say something concerning that and the intersectional, or possible intersectionality, intersectionality, intersectional view on economics.
Yeah. And I just want to say the austerity question, I'm gonna leave open. That's definitely something you're a lot better with, so I will leave that to you. But the intersectional thing, can we ignore race? Can we ignore ethnicity, whatever? No, of course not. And I think feminist economics is very good at recognizing the importance of these categories, much better at least than many other fields. But it's difficult within economics because a lot of this comes down to telling stories, which our methods in economics are not very well-designed to do, but of course, it's important. Demography and population economics, I think that's a good invasion. Feminist economics would invade that well. I would be interested in hearing what you think feminist economics could bring to the table there. Yeah. Because I'm not quite sure. Yeah, stop.
Or maybe, I mean, I just have to say, I mean, there has been lots of critique on demography and population science coming from the feminist movement and the feminist science critique already. And so, I mean, just, just let me add that I think feminist economics can be a part of, or is a part of economics, but it's also part of gender studies. So, and I think that the critical gender perspective or intersectional perspective, that's where also economists can learn from gender studies and the other social and cultural sciences. So, yeah, that's, just wanted to ask that. Keta, you want to say something to, concerning the meso level, maybe?
I never really worked about the meso level, but I noted it was, or that a lot of feminist economics worked with it. Just, we're interested in, because it was just in between the micro and the macro level. Also important to get institutions included in series and not only this individual beings. And the alternative to austerity is, no austerity.
I guess because we are already, we are already very late. I will tell you again, please read this book. I think there is also, there's a very interesting debate about care work as well. And maybe also austerity politics, I'm sure. A little bit about austerity politics as well. You can buy one of your copies here. It costs...
It spends ten or twelve euros.
Ten or twelve euros. And please, for all of you who are interested, come join Frau W L on Facebook or write down on the list that Heidi holds in her hand here. That's our information list. Thank you very much for the interest. It was really nice. And have a good afternoon and good weekend.